Good morning, it's nine o'clock, we'll begin today's Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that for the public, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of the legislative chambers, an automatic defibrillator for health purposes if anybody needs is located in the back. Also, if you have any electronic devices, I'd ask you to turn them off or mute them at this time. With that, we will begin roll call for the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. And item B, call for a meeting then set Tuesday, September 24th as the date for hearings on a certified assessment and corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Kraft, please vote.
Motion passes. As a reminder, Commissioner Boyle's vote won't appear due to technical difficulties, but he did vote yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions D, E, F, and G to approve. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda is there, seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Item H is an appeal, an appeal for the penalties associated with the notice of assessment of omitted properties for the Bella Rose 4919, Underwood Avenue, Omaun, Nebraska, 68132. Mr. Goodwill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. This issue came up when we received a first return from this business in the spring of 2019. And it listed zero as its commercial business property, taxable, tangible, personal property. And because that was a first account and a new account, that surprised us a little bit because experience has taught us over the years that new businesses typically have new equipment. They have something to report. They've bought some stuff. So, we were a little bit suspicious that that report was inaccurate, and so we sent an audit letter to the business, and we ultimately received the most recent tax return, federal tax return with depreciation schedules and backup for that business. And what we discovered was that not only was the 2019 return listing zero taxable property inaccurate, but the business had been in place beginning in 2016, which meant they should have filed personal property returns in both '17 and '18. And so when we find omitted property like that, we kind of walk back the net book value to what should have been reported in those years, and we send a notice out to the taxpayer that we're putting the omitted property back on the books, and there will be a penalty of 25% of the taxes due. So that's how we got here. The business filed a protest. It looks like as the grounds for their protest, it's they were too busy to file a return and the amount of money is too much. There isn't any mention of whether the penalty was incorrectly applied or wrongly calculated, and so we think the penalty should stand.
What's the will of the board? There's motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Seeing no discussion, does that include a German? With that, please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, please vote. Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
We're now called to order the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held August, held Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
Commissioner Kraft? Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Item two is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Corrections matters not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to item three, which is the report of the director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have my report for August before you. Enclosure number one, administrative services. Following the second month of the fiscal year, we are over budget. That is fairly typical for how our budget fiscal year flows, so we will continue to monitor that carefully, but we believe it will even out over the course of time. Enclosure number two, community corrections and in-house programs. Twenty-eight individuals served a combined 173 days in our sanction center, and 32 individuals served a combined 190 days in our transitional discharge center. The 363 combined bed days that we diverted to our community corrections facility from the jail by utilizing these two options is a new record for these programs that have existed for approximately about nine months now. The therapeutic community model that we're developing in select housing units in the jail continues to take hold. Program offerings are expanding, and a culture shift towards an environment of accountability and rehabilitation is building and spreading to other housing units. Our 24/7 sobriety program had 59 admissions in August. 4,042 breath tests were completed. Fourteen were positive for alcohol use. There were 12 no-shows for alcohol breath testing, and the overall compliance rate was 99.4%. Thirty-eight individuals were monitored for a total of 1,035 days of SCRAM monitoring, which is the ankle bracelets which detect alcohol use. There were zero no-shows. There were zero tampering violations and one alcohol violation. SCRAM compliance rate was 99.9%. There were 772 saliva drug tests administered, which is an all-time high for this program. We added drug testing for this program two years ago now. There were 17 positive tests and 29 no-shows. There were nine drug testing patches submitted for testing with six violations. And I did want to point out that the census, the daily census of the 24/7 program has grown to nearly 300 per day. And actually, this morning, I checked and there were 306 people, which is an all-time high on that program. Work release admitted 70, or excuse me, 57 individuals in August, and their work release clients donated 204 hours of community service. House arrest admitted 86 individuals, which was a pretty significant increase over the previous months. The reentry assistance program, or RAP, admitted 49 individuals, which is also a significant increase, and one individual achieved GED. Corrections programs in the jail admitted 87 individuals to their, to those programs, and one individual also achieved GED in the jail. In pretrial services, 41 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, and there were 350 bed days that were saved. 210 individuals were placed on pretrial release, and over the course of the month, 1,241 individuals were managed on pretrial release with a 93% compliance rate. And 247 individuals visited the law library. Enclosure number three, our compliance. We're continuing to provide follow-up documentation from our recent PRIA and ICE audits. Enclosure number four, personnel. While this promotion didn't actually take effect officially until September, interviews for the third captain position were completed in August, and former lieutenant Leon Valkir was promoted to captain. We are, a redistribution of the duties among the captains to emphasize training and staff retention efforts, as well as oversight of medical services, is currently underway. Twenty officers graduated from the training academy on August 16th, and 19 of them successfully completed field training on August 31st. We did lose six officers at various ranks and for a variety of reasons during the month of August. Another correctional, another, excuse me, another class of correctional officers is tentatively scheduled to begin training on October 21st? I'm sorry, I skipped a bullet there. Twenty-two new officers actually began training last week on September 9th. We already have another class tentatively scheduled to begin on October 21st. Early indications point to a third consecutive class of more than 20 officers. I want to give a special thanks to our hiring committee, which consists of our training department, a few sergeants, and the lieutenants at the department, who've greatly increased the efficiency in which we screen and interview candidates. And we're cranking out classes much more rapidly than we had before. The DCDC Wellness Committee continues to expand its membership and is developing several morale-building and health-promotion activities for our staff. And finally, under personnel, the Community Reentry Services Manager position will be filled in September. I actually can make an announcement this morning that we have hired away from CMHC, Shai Meckna, who ran the intensive outpatient program at the, in community corrections for us. She will begin, this position is really going to emphasize the development and implementation of alternatives to pretrial detention. So Shai is an excellent, and her track record is excellent, and she's got the right temperament to deal with all of the stakeholders that she's going to need to deal with to develop this series of programs and interventions in order for us to start making a meaningful difference in pretrial detention numbers. Enclosure number five, population. We admitted 1,855. That is still a very busy month. It is, however, over 100 fewer admissions than we had in that historically high month of July. And we released 1,879. Our high count was 1,367, and our low count was 1,272. Our average daily population was 1,323. Again, that is, that is still quite high, but it has backed off the historical high numbers we had the month prior. There were 342 custodial sanctioned bed days. The US Marshal population decreased, the ICE population decreased, the felony pretrial population increased, the misdemeanor pretrial population remained stable, and probation violations decreased. And I do want to give a little kudos to probation. We've been really pushing them on dealing with the skyrocketing number of people who've been detained due to probation violations, and we have seen some early results that I don't want to call it a trend yet, but they've been, they were able to make some progress and get those numbers down from well over 200 to around 180. So that's, we'll take all of the successes we can get. The female population remained stable, and there were four female housing units opened throughout the month. Enclosure number six, medical. There were 1,578 intake screenings, there were 504 physical health assessments, and inmates were sent out 20 times for emergent medical care. Ten of these were by 911. There were 11 hospital admissions, which resulted in 42 days of combined hospitalization. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 183 initial psychiatric assessments, there were 178 initial mental health assessments, there were 51 mental health infirmary placements, we had six referrals to the Board of Mental Health, and five referrals to long-term psychiatric activities, excuse me, facilities. Other noteworthy items. Over the course of July and August, we held several meetings with a variety of people to explore ways to improve our efficiency of new officer training. As I mentioned earlier, we've done, I think, a very good job of compacting the amount of time that it takes to hire someone. The other side of that coin is how long does it take to get them trained and on the floors from the moment, from their first day? We had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth, some very passionate views were shared. It is a very delicate discussion. We are talking about trying to speed up training without compromising what new officers need to know, to keep themselves and their coworkers in the facility safe. We had several different ideas, and we worked together with the FOP to agree to use overtime during training for the first time ever. That with some prioritization of the most critical classes, we were able to cut the classroom portion of the training from six weeks to four, and then there's, we were, the two weeks of field training remained unchanged. So we are able now to put new correctional officers in place in a combined six weeks instead of eight weeks, which will provide much-needed relief to our staff who have been working, as you know, a lot of overtime and are fatigued. Anything we can do to speed up the process of providing them some relief is a worthy endeavor. And I want to thank all the staff who contributed their ideas and helped us implement this The Department of Corrections also continues to participate in a statewide effort to improve process related to mental health competency and, or value, or, excuse me, evaluation of mental health competency and restoration of competency. While the systemic changes have yet to be developed and implemented, we have seen some anecdotal evidence recently of improvement in terms of wait times for these state-of-Nebraska functions. I think in some regards, just the familiarity of seeing these folks at the Lincoln Regional Center on a regular basis for these meetings has resulted in some positive outcomes on an anecdotal basis. Finally, I want to commend all of our staff for continuing to meet the challenges that we face. I and we are grateful for their perseverance and commitment, while we are making some strides, it will take time for those strides to bear fruit, and our staff continue to work through challenging and difficult conditions. While the challenges can be discouraging, I am heartened by the increasing number of staff throughout the facility who are actively participating in developing and implementing solutions. So I want to, it is encouraging to see the Wellness Committee expanding, the amount of people getting involved in our hiring and training initiatives. While we still need to, we still have much progress to make, it, things are, I think, starting to turn in our favor. A couple other notes that aren't included in my report. I had sent some information to the board about programs that are being put on by the participants in our therapeutic communities, and which I found to be quite powerful and moving. I want, I'll send these out, an invite out, but there is one on September 25th at noon in one of the housing units, and our new hire officer graduation for the class that started last week will be on Friday, October 4th at 1:00 p.m. But I'll send out invites to those events for you. I'm ready for questions.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this report.
Good morning.
A couple of questions, and maybe they're in here, I just don't see them. I thought it would be under the personnel thing, but the question of overtime, you know, is ongoing concern, and so I was wondering if it's in your report, or if you could provide us with the amount of overtime? You know, we've talked about this before in terms of the annual amount, which I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is substantial number of hours, maybe over 90,000 or 100,000 hours of overtime? Is that in the ballpark?
I think it was over 100,000 last year.
Okay. If you could, I don't see it in the report here, track that for me, in terms of what was the fiscal year 1819 overtime hours number, and how much does that translate to in dollars? Because we had to pay for that. That's not in this report, is that correct?
So there's some information, and Commissioners, that I'm, this report is going to look much different in the coming months. There's some, there's some of the ways that it's organized that don't, I think that we could do better at. As you know, I'm going through reorganization, and the report, the reorganization and how we present the report will follow who's doing what, which will be determined in the next, in the very near future, now that I have the leadership team put in place. Administrative services, the tab number one, has some of this information that you're looking for. I think our personnel section and our administrative services section probably are a little duplicative and a little confusing, so we'll be redoing those two portions to make them more efficient and easier for you to access the information. If you look, there's a graph on the, I believe...
Is it page 10?
Well, unfortunately, my, or copy is not numbered with pages, but there's a overtime chart on about the fourth page.
Page 10.
Yep.
And, and, you know, that kind of tracks overtime going back to, if I'm, if I'm reading this correct, sometime in 18, is it?
Looks like for a year.
I'm sorry?
I believe these are by pay periods, and it goes back 12 months.
One, 12 months, okay. So, it looks like currently, by pay period, are we somewhere north of 5,000, 5,500 hours of overtime every two weeks?
That's, that's correct.
So that's 11,000 roughly hours of overtime per month?
For the month of August, that would be approximately correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And we don't have this in here, but it would be useful for budgeting purposes and otherwise to monetize that. 11,000 hours of overtime has got to be a pretty healthy number of dollars.
It is.
Okay. If you could find that for me, that'd be great. Because I don't, I don't think that's in here, is that right?
We do not have it reported out. I know that we have that data in our databases.
Right.
So we can, we can start providing that.
Now, when we drill down on that overtime number, the, the real crunch, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is among the corrections officers cadre, the kind of your frontline troops. They, they, they account for the bulk of those overtime hours.
They do, they also make up the vast majority of our staff.
Correct. And, and, you know, that's, I think, where we're experiencing a lot of staffing problems in terms of understaffing.
Correct.
Overtime problems in terms of forced overtime, that people who, you know, in the, in the normal world work a 40-hour week, which has been pretty standard in my lifetime, are now working 50, 60, 70, 80-hour weeks as a rule. I mean, this isn't an exception, that's, that's how it's working out. So, trying to find, you know, kind of a way forward from that, because I think it contributes to your understaffing problem, which we'll talk about in a second, is, you know, what I'm, I'm trying to get my head around, and that starts with, what are the number of hours that we're dealing with, and then how much does that cost us? Because, you know, obviously, if it's costing us that amount, maybe there's a better way to spend those dollars to bring that down. Which brings me to the staffing question, and I, I see this in here under that same section, I believe it's on the previous page, which has a graph on correctional officer staffing fiscal year 1820. And this, you know, this, this correctional officer cadre, as you indicated, is the bulk of your personnel. I mean, it's people who actually are walking the mods in the correction center, and so they're your, your front line. So, we have an authorized correctional officer strength of 337, and we have an on-hand complement of 276. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Okay.
In that, we did have 21 officers who are not included in that total because it happened after the first of the month.
Okay.
So our, our total is up closer to 300 at this point.
Yeah. So if you put 21 on 276, you're at 297.
Correct.
Right? Authorized strength of 337. So, the percent, based on these numbers that you indicate on this graph, is that we were staffed at about 81.9 or 82% of our authorized strength. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's contributing directly to this 100,000-plus hours of forced overtime every year?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. If we were at our authorized strength, or about, of 337, would the direct effect of that be to bring down these overtime hours?
Absolutely. In that scenario, we'd only be using overtime for training and...
Sure.
Sick days and so forth.
And, you know, it's that cadre that you list here as correctional officers that's, you know, at this, at this report, at 81.9%, that's really under authorized levels. You have two others that are in the 80s. One is inmate accounts and service supervisors, but those are only a handful of employees, and you are authorized at eight, and you have seven. And the other is management and support, you're authorized 33, and you have 28. But this big group of correctional officers is, that's the problem.
Yes.
Okay. You've been at corrections how long?
12 years on October 1st.
Okay. When you first came on, did this problem exist? Was there 100-plus thousand hours of overtime when you joined the department?
There was a, there was a time when we actually were overhiring and maintaining a staff, you know, overhiring when we did a class in order to account for future attrition, and, and there was actually much less overtime. Maybe, you know, it would be rare than anybody was actually ordered for any overtime.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of how we get, you know, kind of to that place where we were once, and we're not anymore. Kind of a final thing, I know that we've had these overcrowding, which, you know, is the twin of understaffing. the, the twin of understaffing part of the problem, that kind of peaked in, I believe you mentioned that July was, as far as anybody knew, an all-time high.
Correct.
We've come down some, but we're still pretty high.
We have.
Right. And a portion of that population is the ICE holds that we have for the federal government.
Correct.
Okay. What kind of a number are we talking in terms of the ICE holds? Is that reflected in here someplace? Am I just missing it?
There are some, yeah, there are some graphs.
Okay.
I believe it's enclosure number five.
Okay.
But I can tell you those kind of off the top of my head because I've given them limits that I recently reduced. I reduced the ICE maximum to 20 and the Marshals to 80. That was a reduction of, between the two of them, when we were hitting that peak population, I asked them to reduce their, their numbers by a combined total of 40. We have been running roughly at least, you know, approximately 100 inmates less than we were five or six weeks ago. So that is an improvement even above and beyond those reductions. Historically, we used to have 200 to 300 between the federal Marshals and ICE in our custody. We told them they were going to have to reduce their numbers when the renovation project began a couple of years ago, and our population spike required us to ask them to reduce it even further.
So if I'm hearing you right, we would, in the recent past, have 20 ICE holds, 80 Marshals holds for a total of about 100? And you've moved that number down by about 40 or 40%?
It, actually, the new number is 100. It was about 140 between the two of them.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Okay, that's fine. You know, those are at our discretion. I mean, we're not statutorily required to hold those people, is that correct?
That is correct.
So if we did get, you know, this chronic overcrowding, you know, a level that we just can't sustain, that would be one place where we could say, sorry, we just can't.
I would, that would be the next thing we'd have to do, is continue to go to those. It, it does place those agencies at a, a large inconvenience, but when it comes to a safety issue for us, that will take precedence. It is also just, not that the, safety trumps everything, but this also is a revenue source for the county, so every time that we reduce those caps, it does have an impact on that. But if we had to do it, we would do it.
So as to that last question of, you have an approximate idea of your annual budget?
Forty-three point eight million.
Very good. And a portion of that, as you indicate, comes from contracts that we have with federal government for these ICE and Marshall holds, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. What was that amount in the last fiscal year, approximately, if you know?
I'm hesitant to give you a
If you can find out.
Yeah, I will find it out for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes. A quick question. You stated on, okay, I just lost it.
Go ahead.
You stated that there were nine drug patches that were tested
Mm-hmm.
and six violation. Isn't that unusually high?
It is. It's higher than what we've had before. There are, there are times with our drug testing population that we do see some fluctuations, but that, that is, that is higher than what I would have expected.
How many drug patches do we usually have out? This is different than the saliva test.
Correct. So the patches are, are a tamper-evident tool that we fix to the person's body that they wear for up to two weeks, and then we send that in for analysis. The, we typically, the drug testing portion of 24/7 has been growing pretty rapidly, so it's hard for me to give you a typical. I can say in recent months, we've, we've been doing some 12 to 16 per month, and maybe there's just a handful of violations. We did always expect and that our drug testing violations would run higher than our alcohol violations, because that's dealing with a more challenging group of individuals with more powerfully addicted substances that they're dealing with.
as with the other testing in the 24/7, it's self-funded. Is the drug patch also self-funded?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I have no, nothing else.
Commissioner Boil. Commissioner Boil.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you for the job you're doing. I stay in pretty close touch with you and your staff to keep on top of things. Times have really changed, to say the least. There's a lot of outside forces that are putting pressure on you, not the least of which is LV 605, which can very conveniently transfers the prisoners from the state prisons to us, which is not working out real well financially anyway, and it also leads to crowding. So sometime we'll try to figure out what to do about that. It's, it's been very difficult. The difficulty with trying to keep staff, I think you've done a terrific job of trying to meet that with starting classes immediately, with cutting the instructional time and working with the FOP to get that done. You're to be committed for that, because I remember in some talks last year that I was really dumbfounded by the, the way that security was handled. It was really by one person, and it just seemed to take forever to get that done. And by the time it was done, so many people had left and lost interest that it was pretty useless. So anyway, I just want to say that I appreciate what you're doing and you're really handling this as well as you can. The overtime, of course, is exacerbated by the fact that the union contract gives those that extra time to seniority, which is a really classic, classic feature of union contracts. It's not a, not a, out of the ordinary at all. But we do need to figure out a way to come to grips with that, because it does lead to really high, high costs. And so we're, we're working on, I know that our, our labor fellow is doing a really good job of that as well, trying to, trying to talk to them. And they're being reasonable, from what I understand, at least I hope they are. So I want to just take a moment to thank you for how you've addressed this problem, what you're doing about it, and particularly with the moves you're making. I think your background and your education and your experience has really added a, a very important dimension to the treatment of our people there, not only staff, but also the inmates. So I want to congratulate you. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mike, let me ask you, did you go to, you all go to the hearing Friday?
I did testify at the hearing on Friday.
What's your thoughts on that? Oh, you want to explain to everybody what that
Certainly. There were, there was a, a hearing of the Judiciary Committee in Lincoln last Friday to address the possibility of doing an interim study related to pre-trial detention across the state of Nebraska. Myself and Lancaster County Director both testified to the trends that we've seen, the efforts that we're doing to try to combat those trends, and, and spoke somewhat to the issue of bail and other reforms that, that this study may consider. It appeared that the, our sentiments were well-received by the committee members. I have a couple of questions to follow up on for Senator Chambers, but other than that, I, it was pretty much just, it seemed like it was in agreement with what we were, the situation that we've been describing for them.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
So motion adjourned Board of Corrections meeting. Motion by Commissioner Duda, is that second? Second by Commissioner Boil. Please vote.
We do need to have a really serious tour arranged of the facility. I think it'd be helpful.
Well, no.
So I think I'll have Karen make that.
Okay.
Do you want to try to do it today? Because we have a meeting at 2:00.
I don't think you can do that today without the note, without notification.
Oh, okay.
I'll talk to Karen about checking your schedules, so we get something that's pretty serious.
Commissioner Rogers and Kavanaugh, you need your vote.
Sorry.
I was waiting on purpose.
That's okay.
Hey, Chris, didn't mean to chatter while that was going on. I had to.
Motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes.
Now we're called to order the Board of Commissioners meeting roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boil, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is minutes and claims that are A is approved of the minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boil, second by Commissioner Duda.
I'll abstain. There's some items to
My company.
Okay, with that, please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan is abstaining.
We'll go to the consent agenda. There are 14 items. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boil, second, there's second. Second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
All Commissioners voting yes.
Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Morning.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Well, good morning on Constitution Day, quite a few years ago. I guess it's also referred this week as Constitutional Week. I hope we all paid attention to the pledge. We pledged to a republic, not a democracy. My purpose today is to bring up a part of the Constitution which I want the people of Omaha to maybe take a part of, a lead-in, and that is a convention of states, where we, the people, yeah, see, don't shake your head before you read it, Mike. Where the people have a say in their, in their government. When the founding fathers made a declaration, they also said it is our right, our duty. To change that or alter that government, women, it does not perform as we, the people, gave them the power to do. There are two options for proposing amendments to the Constitution, to fix those problems rather than, as I understand the founding fathers, not to have another constitutional convention and not to have another fighting revolution. But for me to be able to come to the microphone or form a committee to propose, only propose amendments to fix the problems that Congress has, for example. We don't make the law, but we can propose an amendment. The founding fathers told us we could do that. If you read it carefully, there are two options. If there aren't two options, then maybe Article V itself is not even necessary. The first option is controlled by the federal government and the state legislatures, both for proposing amendments and for ratifying. The second option was not intended for them to have any direction or say-so in it, other than to transmit our petition that we submit to them, to the federal government, on proposed. But also, when we go back to our own conventions, not their convention and not a constitutional convention, to propose or to ratify in the states, not in, it does not say in the state legislature. You have to read that and understand, up above, in the first option, they do say state legislature. In the second option, they do not. They say the states. So what does the states mean? The states means we, the people. We, the people, are sovereign. But yes, we elect people to represent that. Everybody misrepresents. They don't understand, so they shake their head and say, oh, don't go there, it's a constitutional convention. It is not. If the founding fathers wanted there to ever be another constitutional convention, they would specifically have expressed that. It doesn't say that. So please, read it, and I hope the citizens of Omaha, since we're in the center of this country, and we are in a constitutional problem in this country, take a lead in this and tell the liberal professors, the progressive ideas that want to change the Constitution, tell them no. Let's go back to the words, what it said right there in Article V, nothing else. We don't need a debate, it's liberal policy or not. It's not a living constitution. Patrick Henry on June 5th or 7th, which by the way, I have a birthday on June 6th, and I live on Lafayette Avenue, and I am a patriot, he talked about that, and he said, why would we let a minority, which are the elected people, control the process of the second option for amendments? Why would we turn that back to you after having our own convention and let you decide who might be the delegates and who may not be the delegates? And then tell the delegates, which is me, what I can or cannot say or propose? That's why they have a second option. If you don't allow that, then you don't even need Article V, because they'll do what they want to do regardless. So scratch the second option out of there. It's kind of like in Nebraska, we don't have a second house, do we? But we have a group of conservatives around here, 14, 15 groups, that call themselves the second house. But they're not. However, our state constitution, I'm done, our state constitution says, we, the people, are the electors
Thank you.
in the state of Nebraska. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Say none. We'll move on to item seven, committee and discussion action. Letter A is the finance. Committee item one is the budget report. Commissioners Morgan and Boil.
It's presented basically.
I think so. We're, we're still working with Joe. We have that, if I may, we had at the budget vote last, last week, you know, we talked about the overtime burden and how it's affecting the budget and corrections is really, you know, they're working very hard, but that's, it's a, a big dream, so. Appreciate your leadership on that, Joe. You've done a really good job.
Just note, at some point here next month, after that Joe has, we talked about working through a presentation that he'll give specifically in regards to the budget and what the future of our criminal justice costs are on that, so that'll be next month sometime.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll go on to item two, an approval of the resolution setting preliminary tax rates for miscellaneous subdivisions as provided by Nebraska statutes 77-3443. Mr. Lorenz.
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's a two-step process. These are just the approval evaluations for some of the areas, primarily the rural fire districts, the building commission, the library, and the Omaha Transit Authority. And then usually the first week of October, we'll come in and approve the levies for all the political entities, you know, the, the city, the county, the SIDs and, and all of them. So this is just the first round of it, and we'll complete it by early October.
Okay. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boil. Any comment from the public? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, this is just for clarification to our clerk or chief deputy who's with us today. These involve political subdivisions other than Douglas County. Is that correct?
These are just Douglas County.
Yes, but political, other than Douglas County government.
Other than, yes. I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. Yes.
And these and the ones that Mr. Lorenz mentioned in his remarks, set their own mill levies. We're not setting their, their mill levies, that's done by them.
They set the levy by statute. The Board has to approve those.
We, yeah, we certify them, but they, they're responsible for their own mill levies. Thank you.
Okay. See no further questions. There's motion second. Please vote.
All Commissioners voting yes.
Item C is the Child New Services Committee. One is the quarterly report from the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, KORI support. Ms. Shelley Salter and Luke Cortez from the probation officers. Shelley, good morning. Give you time to sit up.
I didn't hear you, Chris, sorry.
I said, give you time to sit up. I said, "Give you time to sit up."
While she's handing those out, I want to remind you that in the packet, there's going to be a list of terms defined. And Commissioner Kavanaugh, last time I was here, we talked about the average daily population one. We can, I added a little to that. Maybe we can talk after. I'm hoping it'll make us both comfortable. But I am Shelley Salter, and I am the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Coordinator for Douglas County. The report that I'm going to give you today is the report of our second quarter for 2019 from our quarterly review summary that we used to create this data for Douglas County. Again, I want to remind everyone of what the system points are. You have something new with you today, too. This is a system map. This was created by our case processing committee, and I kind of want to give you a little of what this is. It's important, one, because we're going to use it with another presentation we have on Juvenile Justice 101 to kind of explain to stakeholders and the public how it is a youth moves through the juvenile justice system. It is also important because the data that you'll see today is something that we can produce at each of these points. These points are a time in a child's life when an adult makes a decision that could change their trajectory. So the system map is twofold. It's, one, it's used to inform the community how a youth might move through the system, and then to help people in reform efforts understand where to look at decision points to decide what's going on here and what could we possibly do to make change. So the decision point that we're looking at today is that of detention. I noticed I already have a correction on my presentation, which is kind of a big one to us. This is what we've called, I've been here a couple times with it, it is the DMC funnel, that is disproportionate minority contact. It's not. It's not. Okay. Well, I can tell you. And so I want to tell you about a big change we've made in accordance with the Office of Juvenile Justice, Delinquency Prevention Act, in that DMC has historically referred to the disproportionate rate at which youth and people of color enter the juvenile and criminal justice systems in our country. This is now changed to something new. It's called RED, and that is for racial and ethnic disparities. And so what that does is to tell us, we want to start looking, we know how the kids come in, we know kids of color come in more often. We now have to start looking at our data in a way to look at kids by their race, ethnicity, gender, geography, and offense, to say, "Are there disparities in the way they're being treated for the same thing?" So next time I come, that will say RED, and we have changed everything over. Now we refer to racial and ethnic disparities and not disproportionate minority contact. And so what this tells us is the total population of kids in Douglas County, and on this slide here, 64% of the kids in Douglas County are white youth, and 13% of the kids in Douglas County are African-American youth, 18% Hispanic-Latino, 4% Asian, and 1% Native American. So when we look at the total population of kids, the next thing we want to look at is, how do they come in contact with law enforcement? This helps us build what we call the DMC or RED funnel. So when we look at law enforcement contact, we say 13% of the kids are African-American, 47% of the kids having law enforcement contact are African-American youth. Then we look at kids once the police have had contact with them. Who comes to probation intake? Who are the police saying, "This is a youth we think needs to be detained"? So again, 13% of the population African-American, 47% of the kids who are having law enforcement contact, and then 57% of the kids who police are requesting detention from probation. And then finally, what we're talking about today is Douglas County Youth Center. We're talking about kids who are detained. So 13% total population, and 60% of the kids detained in Douglas County are African-American youth. So this is our quarterly review summary for April, May, June. This is where all our information is, and I just want to show you guys again that what we're talking about is the section under detained. And now, Mr. Boil, that you're saying that I think I normally did give you guys a copy of this, so I apologize. Next time I will, but I can send one out to all of you.
No.
Absolutely.
Sorry.
And so what this tells us is a total of 250 kids did come through, did come through to be detained in the quarter that was April, May, and June. Of these kids, when we look at kids that are detained, it's the first section here, it tells us that 71 of the kids scored high. Those are kids we would expect to see detained. 26 of those kids scored medium on our risk assessment instrument, and 21 scored low. So those 47 kids are the kids that we're kind of looking at for JDAI. These are not kids scoring for detention, but they're finding themselves detained. They're low and medium risk, so what can we do with these youth? General information, 250 kids came in, 204 of them were actually brought to probation intake. Three kids were detained in this quarter due to what is called an auto hold. These are kids who are from out of state, they are runaways, they get picked up by law enforcement here, and there is a warrant in another state for this child. We respect that. We hold those kids until they can be returned to the state from which they come. And then 43 youth were not brought to probation intake. That means that there was no risk assessment instrument, no probation intake officer was able to look at their history or currently what's going on to determine their risk to the community. And of those 43 kids, all were detained. 28 were detained by court order. Two of them were immediate custody orders that were issued. Nine were loss of alternative to detention, and four were kids that transferred back from adult to juvenile court. You do have this information on here that's on this slide. It's under general information, right underneath the chart that you're seeing. And then this is looking at, again, the same thing, only the best we can by race, ethnicity, to help us figure out what specific programs might we need for specific kids. So this tells you, the blue line here tells you, and this is also on what you're looking at, it's your first graph, graph that you're looking at, total youth, total youth detained, and total youth with no risk assessment instrument. So starting from the left, total youth, 142 African-American youth were brought, 71 of those were detained, and 23 of the African-American youth are kids who didn't get that risk assessment instrument. Same for Hispanic, 45 kids came in, 20 were detained, seven were youth who we didn't see get that risk assessment instrument. And so that's what this slide just tells you, the best we can, breaking it down, to see how many kids are coming in, who's detained, and which kids aren't getting the risk assessment instrument. That's a pretty important thing to us under JDAI, because we want to know that our decisions aren't based on gut, that they are based on some type of structured decision-making that tells us whether or not a youth is a risk to our community. And then breakdown is 204 kids were given the risk assessment instrument in 2019, and this is directly under the graph on the page you're looking at. 118 of those kids were detained, 43 were released. 43 were released with conditions. And then this, Commissioner Kavanaugh goes to your question about the definition, and I thought I would just add it in, because our report does give both. So in this quarter, the average daily population of all youth in the Douglas County Youth Center was 80.1, and the average population of youth that we look at under JDAI, which is youth on juvenile charges, was 57.3. And then under your second quarter results, I see our paper is wrong, and it says first, but it should say second. How many youth were detained? This is the same information, just kind of in a different way for everyone. 118 kids were detained in the second quarter. Forty-eighth of them, 48 of them were considered low to medium risk, which means that these are kids that we would have wanted to see served in the community. Reasons kids were detained. So of the 118, 62 of them were detained, or, yeah, 62 or 53%...
It's first quarter results.
Yep, right, probably the, let's see, second bullet.
You got second quarter results up there.
Yeah. Yours is exactly the same. What are the reasons youth were detained?
It's not exactly like that.
It's not.
Yeah, I said it's labeled wrong. It says first, it should say second.
Can I ask you to do something?
Just look at that monitor. Can you read it?
No.
Yeah, readable. I'm sorry. I really, I want to know every word you're saying, because you make tremendous, you are doing terrific work, but...
Well, Mike, hold on, hold on.
I can't follow it. Maybe she's too old.
Mike, she's got this right here. Everything she's saying is there. She's just presented it different. Yeah, well, she said it was wrong.
Please don't present it differently.
She, let me, the first quarter is wrong. I mean, she said that. She said that means to be second quarter. But all the content that's there is on the paper. She's just laid it out different for this purpose.
Okay, I don't need to be spoken to as a third grader. I'm just saying.
And I'm not trying to do that, but I don't want you out here hazing her when she's trying to do her...
No, I'm just saying, it's a wonderful presentation. I just want to be able to see it and read it and pass it on. I get phone calls. I got a phone call last week about someone that couldn't read anything from home. So people watch this and want to know. You're doing a terrific job. That's the first thing that's really important. That's all that's important.
I agree, Commissioner Boil. I don't know how to make those screens bigger.
We've got staff who can help you.
Or, you know, 57 slides.
Got it. I know. But you're doing a great job. I don't want to diminish that.
So 53% of the kids, 62 out of the 118, were detained for technical reasons, so these are not new charges. These are technical reasons within their probation or whatever they're, whoever they're working with. And then 47% of the kids did actually have offenses. How long were the kids detained? The average length of stay, again, this is the juvenile kids, for this quarter was 40.7 days. And because our target populations for JDAI are warrants and racial and ethnic disparities in our system, we kind of take a special look at warrants. How many kids were detained on warrant? 42 of the 118 kids detained, or 35.6%, were kids who were detained for warrants. 14 youth were detained for violations of probation in this quarter. And then just a reminder that 57% of those kids detained on warrant scored either low or medium risk on their risk assessment instrument. And then when we look at our RED numbers, 80% of the kids who were admitted to detention in this quarter were children of color. So 94 out of 118 were kids of color from our community. This here is just the average length of stay for warrants. It is our target. In this last quarter, it was 41, or, excuse me, in this last quarter, it was 46, 33.3, sorry. That's the length of stay just for kids on warrants. And then we have some additional info today that we brought that I wanted you guys to see, and this is just some additional warrant info to look at. Who are the kids coming in on warrants? And again, we see the racial and ethnic disparities. Four of the youth are white, the remainder are children of color. We know that males come into our system more often than females, so 18 of the youth were male, six female. And then trying to take a look at our top zip codes, this is just an attempt for us to look again at race, ethnicity, gender, geography, and offense, as we're moving to know that kids are similarly situated. How are they being treated? And then I think it was Commissioner Boil and Kavanaugh who's been asking this for some time, and we talk about the kids on warrants, and people just kind of assume, I think, when they hear a warrant, that it's a felony warrant, and it's not necessarily true. Most of our kids present for what is called an unlawful absence warrant. It means they were ordered to someplace, whether it was their home or a group home or wherever the judge wanted them to go, and they left. And so this time, we kind of took an attempt at running back to what are these kids' original charges? So these are kids that presented on warrants, but when they originally started with us, what was it for? We have one child who did have a felony person charge. It was terroristic threats. Four kids who had felony thefts, so that's a felony property charge. We had four kids who obstructed peace officers, two who had assaults, so they fall under misdemeanor person. Under misdemeanor property, we had six thefts, three trespassings, three unauthorized use of a vehicle, two criminal mischief, one leaving the scene of an accident and failing to furnish info. We have a disorderly conduct, so that's a youth that came in originally for another misdemeanor but now has left whatever their court-ordered placement or home is and is in kind of the warrant cycle. And then we have kids who, two started as truancy, one was a minor in possession, those are status offenses, and one of these kids has a criminal offense that is possession of marijuana, less than one ounce, which is considered an infraction. I want you guys to take a look. This is something new that you're getting this time, and it'll help you. I'm going to put that back second. So what these are, is as we look at this data and we're able to break things down over the years, something we've discovered is we have four categories of kids at the Douglas County Youth Center. And so we're going to start presenting information to you this way also, as we get these numbers down. So in this quarter, I think your first one should say youth on probation. And it tells you how many of the kids in this quarter came in, were already on probation, what was their length of stay, 39.8 days, what is their average risk assessment score, how many of them were overridden from that score and detained. Tells us our geography. How many of these kids were state wards? What is the percentage of youth of color on probation that are presenting? On the right, it tells you of these kids who was released with restrictions, who was detained, who was straight released. Tells you in the next one, again, by race, ethnicity, what these 138 kids look like. And then down there at the bottom, this just tells you what their charges were. So you see the warrant again, is the number one reason why we see kids youth detained at the Douglas County Youth Center. The second page is pre-adjudicated youth. So these are kids that I have, we've called in the past without a better word, and this is obviously the better word, pre-adjudicated. These are kids you sometime hear, county, county youth. So 71 of the kids were pre-adjudicated. They stayed for an average of 40 days. Risk assessment score is 7.8, so that is a score that would tell us that kid should be in an alternative to detention. We wouldn't expect them to detain. Top zip code, 10 of these kids are state wards, 79% of them youth of color. Again, who's released, or how they're released, released with restrictions, detained, what they look like by race, ethnicity, and then again, what are these kids presenting for, is that bottom category. Now on these two, I'm going to leave that for a second. We'll finish this. So then these next two categories, youth on adult charges, we know that these aren't kids that we specifically look at at JDAI, but I think kind of in the spirit of if you see something, you say something, our case processing committee has worked with Matt Coosy's office a few times to maybe speed up discovery or find things that we could do to make the system a little more efficient for these kids. It's not that they're ignored, but they are not our target population. That is true. So this is youth with adult charges. And then the last is just kind of other youth, other kids that come in for other reasons. And again, in the spirit of see something, say something, what we know about these kids, we have seen over time that a lot of times they're Native American kids that are possibly in need of substance abuse treatment. So although they're not kids that we target, we have talked to the federal probation officers and the Nebraska Urban Indian Health Coalition and have connected them to see if there's a service they could provide so that they don't have to detain the kids for this, that they could instead bring them to Omaha so they could be served by culturally competent substance abuse providers who can give them culture and everything else that they need. Again, not under our purview, but if you see something, we say something, right? And so that's what those are. And then I want to show you, this is our last slide. This is the Douglas County Youth Center's population last Friday, and there were a total of 69 kids in there. 17 of those kids were there for adult charges only. 14 of those kids have juvenile charges but have now picked up an adult charge, so they're there on adult and juvenile charges, so that's 14. We have two kids that are there on a federal hold. So here's the part that's important for JDAI. We have 12 kids who are pre-adjudicated, one youth is from Sarpy County. And so the Douglas County Youth Center has been, sometime has an expediter position now, somebody at the youth center to assist in moving these kids more efficiently through the system. So their expediter and our case processing co-chairs are working together, hoping, we have a written process now, I know you all understand it's going to have to go to all of the offices to be approved. We think it's good, we're ready to go. And this will help so that we have somebody at the youth center, because these pre-adjudicated kids aren't on probation. They don't necessarily have anyone that's watching over them to say they're still sitting here. And so we have, we're working to have this person be able to, after our 11:00 AM calls that we have when kids are detained, send an email out to all legal parties, any providers working with the youth, to say, "Hey, we were on the call today. This is what we said. This is what needs to be done. You're supposed to follow up." Keep everybody on an email chain to keep it moving. And so a part of this is, we're pulling new data, and for an example, one of these kids we polled last week, and he was detained for 43 days. And on the 43rd day, he pled to... And on the forty-third day, he pled to what he was detained for, forty-three days earlier, and was released that day, and all of the services ordered were in the child's home. So, all we're saying is, why does it take us forty-three days to do that? So, our hope is the use of the expediter with the county attorney and the public defender's office now chairing our case processing committee. We have to shorten that time. Forty-three days is too long to say, go home and do this, if we could've said it even twenty-one days earlier. And then, when we get there, can we do it a little faster even then? And then, finally, twenty-four probation youth. So, on the probation youth, a lot of things is hap, are happening. Probation has now fully implemented their graduated incentives and sanctions grid, so they're able to find other ways to deal with youth as things are happening and not having to violate to detention. We have fourteen-day notice that they're getting from providers, which is to say if a youth is in a facility, a group home or something like that, and the provider says, all right, we, we can't have this child anymore. They're giving us fourteen days to figure out what could we do next steps. It used to be they would call and say, we're done. You need, we're sending this kid home today, and we would have no choice but detain. But now, they're giving us fourteen days so we can figure it out. What else could we do in that time to move the youth directly to services and bypass the part that's detention? So, that's new for that, too. And then, again, in probation, a lot of work upfront to not get the kids going out of homes so we don't have the issues of the warrants. And what can we do to keep kids in their home and do the service there and increase the capacity of their parents to keep them safe as well? And so, so our population, as far as JDAI is concerned, last Friday would have been thirty-six. And so, we're pretty, pretty excited that we have a plan for those last kids and see what we can do. And that's, that's it. So, questions?
You do, you got three so far. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks for this. Some of the, the questions I, I guess I have following up on Commissioner Boyle's, is just, just to the, the way that these things are laid out. I looked, and I guess this is a separate document, for the things that you just presented us, but they're, they're not in the handout that we received. Is that right? The things that were just on the screen are not in this?
These, they are in it. They, most of them are, but I will send you the PowerPoint. So, I'll say no. The whole thing, no.
And these are just, you know, kind of small clerical observations. It would assist me anyhow if, a couple of things. The report was numbered, the pages were numbered. So, when you're talking, it's like, we're on page one, or we're on page five. I'm, I'm scrambling around here, trying to find the same page to the same screenshot in vain a lot of times, but that's probably my fault. It would help. And we've had this on other reports, too. It's just simple stuff. But i, if you could, going forward, give us a page number on these things, that's fine. I see this in a lot of reports, and I guess I, you know, I should start asking for this. If you present us something, it doesn't have who this is from and how do we follow up with that person. And that would be of assistance as well. You know, those, don't go to the substance. The substance is really good. I'm just trying to get it in a, in a form that is as easily accessible as possible. Specifically, when you reference like the, the DMC funnel and the disproportionate share information that you put up there, we don't have that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Please give us that.
Absolutely.
I mean, that, that's really important stuff, and thanks for compiling it. But the same with the QRS graph. And then, QRS actually stands for what?
Qual, excuse me, quarterly review summary. And I think I normally did bring it to you guys. I just guess I didn't.
That's fine.
I think I normally brought you the PowerPoint now that you're playing it.
If we're, if we're seeing something on the screen, it might help us analog types to actually have it in our hand.
Gotcha.
So, those are just kind of some clerical matters. I'm, I'm very interested, when we get to the disproportionate share minority thing, in a, in a variety of these pages, we have percentages for, they're termed youth of color, which I presume covers non-Caucasian kids. And those percentages range from seventy-eight percent, seventy-nine percent, eighty-two percent, eighty-six percent. And, you know, maybe having all of that in one, because I, you know, I try to track this as well as I can, but those percentages are percentages of kids involved in different levels of the, of the process.
So, like an, an RED memo of its own.
Right. So, like the first one, youth on probation, seventy-eight percent of intakes were youth of color. Pre-adjudication youth during the quarter, seventy-nine percent of intakes were youth of color. Youth with adult charges, eighty-two percent of intakes were youth of color. Other youth, and I'm not sure exactly what that category is, but it's eighty-six percent of intakes were youth of color. And then, we get to the minority population of our Douglas County Youth Center, and that number is a different number. What, it was like a seventy percent number or something, wasn't it?
Right.
Okay. What was that number exactly?
Uh, was it, well, it was eighty percent this quarter.
Eighty percent?
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, we keep coming back to this. We've had this discussion many times. We're just trying to get, you know, our, our head around the problem. And the problem is way, way, way out of whack in terms of minority kids being locked up. And, you know, I've said this many times, I don't think they're any worse, any better than any other kids, kids are kids. Why are we having this disproportionate thing over? I mean, this is not anything recent. It's been going on for a long time. But I, I appreciate you're kind of the canary in the coalmine in terms of give us the information in, in a form that we can actually, you know, get our heads around. And I see that my light's on. I might have some more questions for you in a minute. Thanks.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. First of all, I want to make it very clear. I, again, I said it, but I admire the work you do, the knowledge you have and what you're doing. So, but please don't misinterpret my complaining about-
Oh, you are fine. I, I am exactly the same.
I want you to know that. Okay, I'm looking at the youth on probation, second quarter, twenty-nineteen. Up at the top, it says one-hundred-and-thirty-eight, and then thirty-eight point, yeah, thirty-nine days or whatever in the average length of stay. And then, I'm a little confused. Down there, it says forty-two, six-eight-one-on-one, forty-two intakes. It doesn't, there's no other zip codes, but you're focusing on the obvious placement of persons of color. Is that what you're doing?
That's the number-one zip code we receive, see kids come from.
Okay.
For that population, for kids on probation.
Regardless of ethnicity?
Right.
Regardless, okay.
We, it's just, it's just a zip code. Doesn't say anything about ethnicity.
I want to ask you, what, I have so many problems with probation because a lot, these children are coming from homes. I mean, I, this morning, I'll give you an example. I kind of come from a place like that. This morning, I thought I was supposed to be at Scott Catholic High School for my grandson Jack. No, it's Thursday, okay? So, I wrote everybody, said I'm not coming, you know? And I could've gone off and drank a bunch of coffee. Anyway, the point is, I, I didn't function too well this morning. I didn't show up where I was supposed to show up. Thank God, my grandson sent me a text, hey, grandpa, it's Thursday, not Tuesday. So, that's why I'm here. Same thing applies to these young people, where their lives may not be as orderly as the folks who show up on time and understand where they're supposed to be, unlike me this morning. And I'm really concerned about that, because I think we're setting them up, not you, but we are, setting them up for failure. And I want to just quickly say that I think the common denominator across the board in all of this is poverty. And I think poverty is stealing the souls of these young people. It's, it's, it's really inside, and it's eating at them, and they, they don't function. And the priority to show up for a probation hearing is just not even on their map. And I'm really concerned about it, because when we do these things and they get set up on probation, and then they're told not to do something, that just, ah, it doesn't occur to them. That's not how their lifestyle. And I, I'm just saying that poverty is driving all of this. And I was on the Federal Home Loan Bank Board at Topeka, and there was a nun from Mercy Housing in Denver. Boy, she was a terror. She was wonderful. And she used to lecture the bankers about, don't, you know, you're, you're missing the vote on this. All these things about where you're looking for people to build housing and get them into state. It's poverty that's driving, it's poverty. And don't look so much at, I mean, color is big, but all, I think, all these things that most of these children have in common, most of the children, I would say, I'm not a social worker or have a degree in it, but I think poverty is driving so much of this. And I, I, so, I mean, it's, you know, it, it's great work that we're doing this, and it bothers me so much that we have children that are spending, you know, here's youth with adult charges. And I know these are kids, children that have done serious offenses, but one-hundred-and-six days now, that's gotta be the judges and the lawyers that are jacking that up, you know, frankly. And, you know, that, that's just, that's just awful, you know? I'll let you talk.
Well, a couple of things. The youth on adult charges, you might see them stay until they age into a different facility, right? And find themselves in prison. So, their length of stay will be longer. And you're right on your first point. That's why we've indicated the number of state wards on each of these, because poverty is one part of why that is. But you're right, we have a lot of kids that, everywhere, that are dysregulated because of childhood trauma, because of incarcerated parents, parents who have mental health or substance abuse issues. There's a lot of reasons that kids who open their eyes in the morning are already behind where my kids were when their eyes opened. You're right. And so, that's a huge part of this, in catching those kids early, hopefully before they're eight years old, understanding the importance of zero to four when we're working with kids, and understanding that their parents have trauma, too. We don't treat kids in a vacuum. So, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm a for, a former CPS worker, Child Protective Service. Agree with you a hundred percent. These are those kids. They do need our help.
Well, you know, and I, the other thing is, you know, you, you made a comment, and I know it's the philosophy about catching them early, you know? We need to catch them late, because I, I will not buy that these thirty-four young people on adult charges in our second quarter, that they, that they are, they're caught late, that now they're destined to the big house. And I'll quick, talk quickly. We need to figure out a way to step in and pull them back from that shaft and try to have intensive care to get them the hell out of that category. We can no longer say that, okay, well, these kids are just doomed. They're not doomed. They're our children, and we need to step in and pull them back from the cliff. And we've got to, and this, some, something's gotta happen to stop, and I, and you're a real advocate for this, I know, to stop them from going and admitting that they're gonna go to prison now. That's the next, that is a big thing. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Shelley, sometimes Commissioner asks questions that maybe aren't appropriate, and I'm gonna do that. Hopefully, it won't be too inappropriate, and you don't have to answer. I know you've been involved in this field with the juveniles for more than five years and have a great expertise, and I respect and appreciate that. If you were looking at this, and this is really speculative, and we see our numbers, I think sixty-nine is what you said now there, and you look at the different categories. If you were looking at this two or three years from now, what do you think the number would be that we might have at the youth center if we're doing all that we should be doing and seems to be planned? And if you don't feel like you want to answer that today, I totally respect that. But I'd like to hear what you kind of feel.
It's a tough question, Commissioner Morgan, and I know it's a question because of issues that are so beyond the work that I do. And they just are. I think that if our work is done more efficiently, if I were to say that I think that you could hold that number at fifty, I think that would be fair. But I am going to say that the issues beyond what is on these pages are of very little concern to the work that I do, if that makes sense.
And I think to do and achieve some of that, we all need to be working together and as a team and going in the same direction for the future.
Right.
But I appreciate your input, and as I said, you didn't need to answer. I didn't want to put you in that spot. You get in enough spots as it is without my help. So, thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Before we go back to Commissioner Kavanaugh, I think that she might be hesitant to say, I think the two number you're looking for is somewhere in the thirties, because basically, note, this number she's got is the second quarter. This is the number before forty-two, two-fifty-one kicks in. That's LB eleven-twenty-five, right there from that count that she gave us today. There's only thirty kids on adult charges. As of June, July one, those kids shouldn't be in there. So, the number she's giving you really is, she's trying to be conservative, but if you go by legal standards and everything else, and hopefully things be in place, the only number that should be sitting there are those kids on adult and the hold. So, that puts us at about thirty-four, thirty-five kids. Commissioner Kavanaugh, then Commissioner Borges.
Thank you. Following up on what Commissioner Rogers just brought up, because, you know, we're tracking this statutory change. And the best information that we've got is that it would affect our average daily population by low single-digit numbers. Have you factored that into any of the information that you're giving us?
If you're talking about LB eleven-twelve that went into effect July first, I can't imagine why it would only affect the population by a couple of numbers.
Right. What I'm saying is, have we got that information that shows since July, too, now, which is sixty days anyhow, sixty, two and a half months?
Our number is lower, for sure. And, and the number is definitely lower, and when you look at last Friday's, it's, it's definitely, yes, it is.
I guess my question is, were you able to capture that number and present it to us in any of the information today? Or, if not, I understand that. It's a recent change in the, in the statute.
I don't know if I understand your question.
Okay. The, the point that Commissioner Rogers was trying to make is that this statutory change will have an effect on our average daily population. Yes? Do you understand that part?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, okay, what's that effect? Put a number on that.
Okay. Okay. So, part of LB eleven-twelve is that you won't be able to detain kids for treatment, excuse me, for treatment or rehabilitation or to lack of appropriate alternatives. So, the kids that are predispositioned and the kids that are probation are kids who need different alternatives. Kids who are scoring from six to nine on the risk assessment instrument through all these pages are all kids that should be alternatives to detention that should be impacted by LB eleven-twelve. Whether or not we have all those alternatives in place today is a different question. By the end of the year, I do believe those kids will be moving more efficiently, if that helps, and it would be much more than just a couple of kids difference in numbers. From a state JDAI perspective and probation perspective, one of our charges for, when this quarter three is over, is exactly that, identify which kids would have fallen under LB eleven-twelve that have not been detained now. So, I might have more concrete information for you. It's hard for me to do things that are speculative, because I find in this field, if you say anything off one little step, people take it so far, and then the work is, is lost. And so, yes, that's exactly what the intent of the legislation is.
I understand the legislative intent.
But we will have a report on that with our third quarter.
Right, right. But we don't right now. I mean, you're not able to give us a number right now that that's had any effect.
I would never get a number that I didn't run.
I understand. I'm just trying to get to whether or not I'm missing something in here, and I'm not. There's no number that shows any actual effect of that. And maybe going forward, we, we can capture that. I understand you're, you're an optimist.
It wasn't an effect at this point.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be nice to see that. The point that Commissioner Boyle made about the correlation between poverty percentages and disproportionate minority incarceration percentages is of great interest to me. So, what I'm taking away, just to use the youth center population percentage that you gave, is that eighty percent roughly is the minority population. That's what you told me a minute ago of the youth center, right? And I wonder if going forward, we could try to make a correlation here, because poverty numbers are available statistically in our SMSA so that we could say, like we have on minority representation in the general population, that eighty percent of our population falls into which racial category. What, what I'm getting at is, I understand that, that there might be a correlation here. I don't know that I would agree that eighty percent of our poverty is represented in the minority community of our, of our greater community. I would be interested in finding out what that percentage is so that we, you know, we can start to actually hone in on that correlation. Right now, we're kind of using our common sense to speculate, well, poverty might be a contributing factor to this. And if that's the case, what's the poverty-minority-population correlation, if any? Like I said, I don't think eighty percent of our poor people are minority people. Maybe- Maybe I'm wrong. I'd like to know. That number exists, and could you find that for us?
I know the Nebraska Court Improvement Project has a new data dashboard that you're able to look things like that up, so I could get it there. But I would also suggest poverty is not the only reason. You do have a racial and ethnic disparities coordinator in Douglas County and a racial and ethnic disparities committee that have been working on a four-part series they've been doing this year. The fourth part will be October 16, talking about all the reasons that this exists. If you'd like, I could bring a really abbreviated version of that back to you guys next time
Great.
to tell you what those reasons are. Poverty is not alone, but I do know Court Improvement Project has that on their website. I'd be happy to bring the information back.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just to make a point, I think, I think the correlation Shelley you're trying to make is not the 80% of poverty are there, but that 80% number you gave of racial and ethnic disparities in the QRS report, there is correlation to say that some of those, formerly DMC now, racial and ethnic disparities, there's coalitions between the poverty piece, because there's other things, other social determinants that may be a factor in the racial and ethnic disparity stuff. There's some, there's some writing on that.
Right. I actually didn't make that connection, and
No, I was, no, I'm trying to
There are a lot of reasons why it exists.
I'm trying to separate it out, just for the
And as far as the 80%, I don't know.
And, you know, and just the point to note that income, poverty level or not, it should be noted that all kids below the age of 17, quite frankly, are at the risk of being there with one stupid mistake. Commissioner Borges?
Shelley, on the numbers, so I guess I'm at the point where we don't have to keep saying we have an RED problem. We already know we do, and it's extreme. And so, let's shift, which I thought that's where we were going with all of the work here in the last year or more, was to solutions. And so what I mean by that is, we have the problem, what now are we doing to try to solve it? And one of the ways I would think we might be able to take the deeper dive into are the kids who are scoring high on those risk assessments, what are the categories of that risk assessment, which may be poverty, which may be whatever, I don't know what they are? What are, what are the categories or what are the items in which that child is scoring high that they have to be detained? And how do we look at those kids through that risk assessment to try to find solutions to, one, figure out how we don't have to put them into the youth center, or if they're in there, how, how do we get them out as soon as possible? And then, of course, make sure that they don't come back. So can we use that tool that we have, that we're assessing the child as this risk, but what are those risks that, that he's scoring or she's scoring so high that they have to be detained? And again, we know, just from your report that you just gave, that those who are, those who are scoring high, there's a high minority of youth. So, does that make sense? Is that something that we can maybe shift to? Because again, I don't think we need to, everybody can sit here and continue to say we have a problem, okay. But what, what steps are we taking within the system? And maybe that risk assessment would be a tool to really do the deep dive on?
Well, I happen to like our risk assessment. It has no questions that would indicate culture, geography, or anything, so I like it. And I know Dr. Ann Hobbs at the Juvenile Justice Institute has worked to validate our instrument, and what she says is, it's overwritten too many times for her to say it's valid, but if she takes out just the parts where we follow it, it appears to be a valid instrument. So what it asks, and I don't know these by heart, and I'm happy to bring this back to you, but the first question is, you know, what is, what is the youth currently presenting for? Is it a violent felony? Is it a misdemeanor, any of these categories? You know, what is the, what is the youth presenting for? And points are given that, so, and I, gosh, I hate to say things that I don't know positive, but the first one is the score of a 12. Now, a 12 is, is a youth who's detained because of the offense. The offense is so violent that this is a reason the youth would be detained. Then it asks, is this youth currently involved in the court? Because if you are presenting for a new charge and you already have a charge, that tells us, okay, this is someone who's a little riskier than normal people. You already in trouble with the court, and here you are in trouble with the court again. Another question is, was your first arrest before the age of 16? What we know when we study criminogenic risks of children is that if your first arrest occurs before the age of 16, you're more likely to be arrested again throughout your life. And so that's, I believe, question number three. It does, and there is another one in there, and I don't know it off the top of my head. It does give you mitigating factors. Is there an adult, responsible adult, able to care for this child and provide for the safety until they return to court? And I don't remember all of those either. And then there's different aggravating factors, like the number, like they'll get a point if they have run. If they have a documented failure to appear from another court hearing, that's a point, because you've already said you didn't come to court, you have another charge, like we need to get you in, we're trying to get you some help. So I'd be more than happy, myself or someone from probation, to come with me next time to go over it with you. I do read the intakes pretty much every day, but I'm not gonna say I've memorized that tool. But there is nothing on there that should allow any points because of where a child lives, what their race is, what their ethnicity is, what their family situation is. It is strictly related to what is the crime they are presenting for, where have, where are they in any kind of a process with us now, and then any other things that we, and I don't know the whole tool, so I can't tell you. But I do, I do like the one that we have myself, because it doesn't have any of those things that, that are culture that, that catch kids.
Okay. Well, then, that's not the solution, but I guess, what, and my time's up, I'll, well, just, I just need, we need to switch from continuing to talk
Right.
to solutions. And so, what, and again, we know the zip codes, and that may be the place to start. Again, trying to find where that starting point is to figure out what the solution is, because again, it's a problem, and it's been a problem. And so how do we fix it, rather than continuing just to say, yeah, we got 80% of those kids in our youth center? That, that's not cutting it anymore.
Right.
So, and, and the forums that you talked about are kind of right on in terms of those social determinants, you know, from the Dr. Kikar who presented here in the community, that we need to look at those as well as others. And so, we're looking, we got it, we know it, so how do we now move to the solution-oriented, rather than keep repeating again and again and again, history, history, history? How do we come up moving forward with solutions? And so, maybe we can continue to talk offline on what we can look at or how we can look at those characteristics to, to try to come up with something.
And I'll tell you, I'm kind of excited about this switch to looking at this as racial/ethnic disparities, because I think that people think this problem is huge. You know, we have 76,000 kids in Douglas County. Right now, I'm asking that we figure out something different for 36 of them. And so if we are, start really looking at those kids, lining them up, looking at the racial/ethnic disparities, I think what we might have is something like I was talking earlier with the US Marshals, so it's two kids a quarter. I get it. But if we have a program that can give specific service to this culture, these kids, then we have a place for those kids. And so how do we break this 36 down to figure out what specifically do we need and who in 68111 can provide it? Instead of making it such a huge problem, let's just look at the kids we're talking about and what can we do with them.
Well, I would like to talk that you brought up about solutions. That's really the word that I should have used too, and I don't mean to imply that poverty is the total and complete cause of all of this, but to me, it's a big factor. And I, and I think, you know, we just, we need to figure out a solution so that these children are not, that it is not, in spite of their high scores, that this is, there's a certain course of action that must follow. I really think we almost, I mean, I'm just thinking about, of course, it doesn't really fit the model very well, but the Scandinavian countries that don't treat people like this, well, first of all, they're all Danes and Swedes and all that sort of thing, and, you know, they, they have a different attitude about things. And they have a much freer system of, of, I guess I'll say punitive or locking people up. I'm not sure they have a juvenile system at all. I'm not really sure what, what's that's all about over there. But anyway, what I'm saying is that I don't want us to, and I know no one here is, giving up on these kids and saying, this is, okay, they've got this score of 12, they've got this thing, I mean, God, they're just, you know, this is, they were arrested when they were 14 and all that stuff, so this, they fit into this slot, and they are going to go absolutely to hell. That's it. They're gonna go this route and that's, we just have to figure out a different solution. Because we can't, we cannot give up on them, and I know we're not, but I mean, we, we just have to come up with something really innovative. You know, good housing, we've gotta have people who are, who look like them, taking care of them. We've gotta have all these things in place so that they feel comfortable that maybe we can recover them and get them out of that mess they're in. I have a, I have a niece who has a son who's African-American, and I've talked about him before, and he doesn't come from poverty. I mean, it's a loving home, I mean, it's unbelievable how he's surrounded. And, but he went off the rails, and he has, it's a mental health problem more than anything else, and he's easily led. And so he's in prison, you know, he's, he's, he went to prison. He was jacking around with some guys, and they walked into a bodega, or whatever you wanna call it, and somebody handed him a gun, bang, there he is. He's the kid with the gun in the hand, and he's gone. And of course, he's no longer a minor, which makes things worse, and of course, now he's has a girlfriend who has a baby and all that. It's just, you know, we can't give up on him. I won't accept that. And we cannot give up on these young people. We have to find solutions to break that whole path they're on. I mean, it's just, we're just missing it. And, you know, the talent we're losing and all the rest, and it's education, it's all these things. So that early, early intervention's important, but when they reach this point where they're headed to hell, we've gotta step in and say, nope, you're not going there. This is what we're gonna, we're gonna shell, we're gonna shock you into something else. We gotta do it.
So, let me just make a point that, just to put the score in context, the, the scores are only used to determine if the kid should be in detention before they get to services. So, I don't, I don't want anybody listening to think the, the score determines the future. The score is, just says, hey, and that's the, that's a deep question to probably ask Shelley to talk about, about the override situation. It's, it's, they has gotten better, but it's still a area, but the, the main part of the score is just to say, hey, will this kid show up for court the next day, and is this a kid, a fear to recommit anything before we can get them to services? And that, and the service discussion is a whole nother matter in some regard. Commissioner Borges?
Well, and that's a very good point, because again, it goes back to, if they're scoring high, why are they scoring high? What are those elements? What are the reasons why their score is high? So if they aren't coming, or if they did miss court, or they ran from someplace, why? And then, look at how we can solve the why. So, the, the, as we were all talking here, one of the things that I think would be very interesting, and, and we did it with the, the families, and it's continuing, but we asked the parents of those children who are in our youth center, what, what was it that got them to, to why they're here? And what was missing, and what wasn't there for you? And, and the number one thing actually was mental health help, that they, they called out, but nobody listened until it was here, and now they're in our youth center. But it, the interesting thing, I think, would, would, that would be interesting, is to sit those youth down in our youth center and ask them. And the reason I say that is because years ago, when Building Bright Futures started, I had the youth center do a writing project, and the writing project asked the question, what was it in your life that was, that happened that was so terrible that you ended up here? And after we did that, John Kavanaugh, who was the, heading the Building Bright Futures and a professor from UNO, and I sat in a room at the youth center, and there wasn't a dry eye for two hours reading these letters that they wrote. And the number one thing was that they lost their person. Every child, every single child said their downfall came when they lost their child, or their, their person. And it, and some, it was their daddy, their mom, their aunt, their uncle, their grandma. It didn't matter who it was, but once that person wasn't there, they had nobody to turn to. And so, if we were to just have a couple of conversations with youth, come up with a, a tool that we, you know, very structured questions to ask them as to what they need, what they needed, or what can we do moving forward, let's hear it from them. Let's see what they have to say. You know, Levon always says, Levon Stennis always says, and it's just stuck in my head, those closest to the problem are, come up with the best solutions. Well, let's talk to them. Let's ask them, you know, maybe we can start finding our solutions based on that. But I'll talk to, to Mark and Brad about that as well, but for JDAI, that would be, you know, good to sit in and listen to what they, what they, what they say.
You couldn't be more right. A lot of studies about these kids, when they look at, well, this kid, you know, with the story that you're saying, well, this kid had, and it's exactly the same, so, you know, blah, blah, blah. What they find out is exactly that. If a child has one person that they can count on, that tells them they're worth it, that tells them they can do it, that child is more likely to succeed. So, and all of this, all of this data is no substitute for a conversation with a family about what they need. And I know it's difficult. I interviewed lots of kids in CPS, and it's hard to sit in the silence. You have to ask them, and then you wait. But we get frustrated, so we say, is it this? Is it that? And then they get confused. You have, interviewing a child is a whole different thing. And ask the question, sit in the silence, they will answer you. And you're right, one person can make a difference.
It did. I mean, it was
It's that simple.
I think I still have those letters, and it was, it was absolutely amazing to read and to hear and, or read the stories of, of what happened. And they were very, very well-written, and you could tell the thought process of them. They would write a little something, and then they would doodle. And they were actually very good doodles. So artists, you know, talent was there, but their articulation of what they wanted to say was very clear. And that clear message, there was no mention of school,
Right.
no mention of necessarily home, good, bad, or ugly. It was just that person. Their, their pain was so bad, if I'm losing that person, they had no hope. So, anyway, maybe we need to re-energize that conversation with those youth that are in there, just to see what they can tell us.
Agreed.
Thanks, Shelley. See, and you're gonna, just follow, you're gonna send?
Absolutely. I will send the PowerPoint.
Hey, thank you very much.
With that, we'll go to item G, the Human Resource Report, item one.
Can the president have any comments?
Ally, please.
I appreciate that young lady's enthusiasm. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. In light of it being Constitution Day, I'm gonna start off with something that might sound a little bit negative, but I wanna end up with a positive, so before I get cut off. Listening to all this today points out one thing to me, that, yeah, we need to stop for a minute and think about the common sense of what we've been listening to. First thing is, answering the question of how did a child get there? Common sense says that he wouldn't be there if somebody didn't file a complaint, or if some judge didn't somehow decide to send him there. Nothing happens out of the clear blue sky. Maybe he got in trouble at school, and somebody out there said, oh, that kid needs help, go send him down to the detention center. Maybe the psychologist in the school system's special education department decided that kid needed to be detained. Who knows? The kids themselves sometimes don't know, and their brains don't mature till they're 26, we're told. So let's slow down. Let's ask the questions, who, what, when, where, why, and how? Before we detain them? Was it a school teacher that caused the complaint, that caused that kid to be handcuffed and run downtown, so now we wanna do away with school resource officers? Let's, just be careful what we're doing. And also, over the last couple of years, here and many other places And also, over the last couple of years, here and many other places around Omaha, there's a lot of national figures, and charitable organizations that are trying to help us, but maybe they also have agendas, and I'm getting a little tired of the disparity and the racial injustice thing, can we come up with something more positive? First of all, the privacy laws probably shouldn't let us gather all that data, that's particularly none of our businesses, private information. But, there's a website that I ran across last night, thinking about this Constitution Day, chrisannhall.com. Now here's something for the disparity people to think about. An article or a book that's titled More Than Victims, and it's trying to say, hey, instead of talking about all the poverty and the disparity and the racial injustice, restorative justice, changing from republic to democracy, and criminal justice to restorative justice, let's talk about the black heroes of our country's founding, starting with a black man that fell at Lexington Concord. In this article, she lists eight or 10 others. Let's talk about those. Instead of going to all these meetings like at the Community Engagement Center at UNO to hear about the burning and hanging of a black man in 1919, I'm tired of it. Are we, are those people taking advantage of black people? Are they using black people instead of lifting them up? I think so. Maybe black people are tired of hearing all the disparity stuff, and I'm tired of being associated with the guilt of it. I didn't bring slavery to the shores of the United States in 1619, African people did, European people did.
Larry, I'm asking you to keep it on the topic, 'cause you're going somewhere that...
I know, Chris, but that, that was talked about at the university.
No, you're going somewhere I don't wanna go with.
Let's be honest about it. We, our nation was not founded on the basis of slavery.
You can come back next Tuesday, there'll be an item on it. Keep it on juvenile justice, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to, uh, item G, which is Human Resources, item one is the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service, that is as submitted. Item two is Legislative Issues, and from last week, Marcos was working on those that the board wanted. Um, huh? Oh, and with that, there is need for an executive session for litigation. One item. So before we go, we reserve the right to enter executive session in order to protect the public's interest with respect to discussion regarding litigation. Is there a motion and a second by the board? No, just, uh, motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda, and again, we're going in for just litigation. Please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.